Monthly meeting of the Penfield Public Library Board of Trustees. I see most people are here. We may have another person join us late. But I guess I will call us to order at 7:03 and there's our other joiner. But we will begin by, as always, approving our minutes from the previous meeting, which was on September 15th. So Gail had sent that out as part of the package packet in preparation for the meeting. So I would entertain any corrections or changes to the minutes as presented. Not hearing any, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes. You can signify by raising a hand to move. So Niraj with the thumbs up, would anybody like to second that? All right, Melissa seconds. So all in favor of approving the minutes signify by raising your hand. I think that carries, I gotta scroll from one side to the other. All right, we will call that carried. Thank you, everybody. And so we move on. Public participation, as we've been doing ever since we went into COVID pandemic restrictions, our public participation is that we are having our meeting take place on the public access channel. Bunny, did any other public participation come in? Or this, all right, sounds good. And then what about communications? Any letters or other mail come to us that we need to have brought to our attention? All right. I love how quickly we move through these early items. So the next item is the town liaison report. I don't see Linda here. Bunny, did she give you a report to share with us?
Yes. She had another Zoom meeting at 6 o'clock, so she was pretty sure she'd be late to this one. And her only thing to report is that on Wednesday night, that would be tomorrow night, the town board will vote on the 2021 town budget with no tax increase.
All right. Any questions for Linda? You can ask them, Bunny, but probably not get any answers. So that's the town board report, thank you. So we'll start with our first committee report, which is, as always, finance and budget. So Barbara, if you would please walk us through this month's reports.
Okay. Actually, once again, our report is pretty self-explanatory. We don't have, we have our money in the bank, as we noted on the financials, and our library expenditures are still running slightly behind where they're budgeted. So we are in good shape and I think we can thank Bunny for that. So I don't see anything that is out of the ordinary. Bunny, you might have something you want to add.
Thanks, Barbara. Yes, I just want to bring a couple of things to people's attention. You might notice that some of the lines look like they're running a little maybe ahead of where you're expecting them. Not total for the year, but just suddenly, a sudden spike this month. We're trying to spend 2020 money ahead of time to pay for things in 2021 because we are getting that big cut in 2021 of $36,000. So we're trying as much as possible to spend 2020 money to buy some 2021 things. That'll give us a little leeway to play with what we do have in 2021 and cover our losses a little bit.
With that spending ahead, will you need us to move some items from one line item to another? Will you need us to move some money around?
No, I don't think so. We have enough cushion in all the lines to cover what we expect to spend by the end of the year, plus that little bit extra that we're trying to pull to push ahead into 2021. So I think we're in good shape as far as our total revenue is.
Thank you for alerting us to that and thank you for making sure that money does not go unspent. We want to certainly claim everything that's set aside for us. Any questions for Barbara or Bunny on the financial reports that have been sent out to us?
I just want to stick in another thanks to Gail McKay. She really worked very hard to find all the little nooks and crannies where we can possibly affect some push ahead for those funds.
All right, thank you. Before I take a motion, I'm getting background as it might be from the closed-circuit TV. Brian, if you can hear me, since you're the host, I can't mute you. But if you could mute yourself so we don't have the background noise of whatever's going on in your office, that would help.
I am muted. Give me one second, Chris.
All right, thank you. It might be the PCTV too, I'm not sure. I'm definitely getting, I'll describe it. Yes, that was it, thank you.
No problem, sorry about that.
That's all right, we just had a little cocktail party or something going on in the background. Let people think we're more fun than we really are. All right. With that, I guess I would entertain a motion to approve the finance and budget reports. All right, I got a thumbs up from Niraj. Anybody like to second that? Denise, thank you. All in favor signify by raising your hand. All right, that carries. Thank you, Barbara, for presenting and thank you Bunny for drawing our attention to some of the important items on that. Great, so we're gonna come to the Personnel Committee report. And before we do so, Amy had asked me to say something. So some of you are aware that I received a promotion earlier this year, which is good news in that I'm working full-time, but it's also a management position. And it has meant that I no longer have the ability to give the board the time and energy that I would like to give to it in order to be able to do it as well as I can. And so I let Amy and Bunny know last month that I'm gonna step down at the end of the year. And so Amy didn't want to say that on my behalf, so I'm informing all of you tonight. So we will be forming a trustee search committee. And one of our other trustees who has an expiring term is going to allow their, is not renewing, at least that's what I was told. I can be corrected on that. So the trustee search committee would be looking for two new trustees, one to fill a regular term and one to fill out the remaining years in my term. Amy, as Personnel Chair, is there anything that you would like to say or add to that?
Yes, so we, Niraj and I both have expiring terms at the end of this year. Niraj is going to stay on and I'm going to retire and give up my spot. So we are in the market for two new library board trustees. And Gail has, and Gail and Miriam have already sent out the advertising for the positions. We're about a month behind where we were last year in the search, which it's 2020, so of course we're a month behind. So the deadline for applications is November 4th. The candidates will be presented to the board at the meeting on November 17th and then interviews will be conducted between the November and December meetings. So we're still on track to have the positions filled by the end of the year. We're just in a bit more of a time crunch than we were last year. So we need to, I guess I need to make a motion to have a board trustee search committee.
Yes. Yeah, I think, yeah, search committee or search team. Yeah, so we'll accept that as a motion. Would somebody like to second that?
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Barbara. So before we vote on it, I think normally in the discussion point, we decide who would serve on it. Typically, we have three members serve on that search team and Linda serve on it as the fourth person as our board liaison. Typically, the three people who serve on it come out of the personnel committee. And so I don't want to necessarily put anybody on the spot, but since Amy is an expiring term, it seems odd to me to have Amy interview the people who would come on since she would not be the one working with them. So in that case, it would probably be O'Neil, O'Reilly and Power to be the search team. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay, I'm seeing some head nodding. All right. So Rachel, Denise and Barbara, are you okay with being the search team?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And I guess in the past, we've then sort of left it up to, generally, the Personnel Chair, if they're also on the search team, serves as the chair of that team. But one year, I remember I was on the Personnel Chair but couldn't be on the search team. And so we allowed those three people to choose among themselves who, which of those three would be the chair. Are we okay with that or do we want to assign them? So Rachel, Denise and Barbara, are you okay figuring that out for yourselves? I'm seeing some head nodding.
I think that we can discuss it.
Yeah, I think we can figure it out.
Okay. All right, so the search team will be Rachel, Denise, Barbara and Linda. And they will decide among themselves who will be the chair. Is there any other further discussion or questions before we vote on that? All right. Then we have a motion, we have discussion. All in favor signify by raising your hand. All right, that carries. So thank you, Amy. We'll do a longer thank you for your five years of service when we get to the end of the term. But thanks for the report tonight. And then we also have one other item from Personnel, correct?
Yes, we need to form an officers nominating committee for the 2122 year. And I'm actually, I'm not, I have not done that in the past, so I'm not very familiar with how that all will work.
Yeah, well, all right. So knowing that this was coming ahead of time, I thought about it. And I remember last year's nominating team was Melissa and Mary, both of whom have served as previous presidents and have some idea about what goes into putting together an executive. So again, I'm gonna kind of put people on the spot without having talked to them ahead of time. Melissa and Mary, are you willing to do that again this year to be the executive, the officers nominating committee?
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, I don't have a lot of free time, but okay.
Yeah.
This working from home is killing me. Yeah, I can do it.
Okay. Thank you, Mary. I heard your reluctance, but if I recall, there's also, right, it's a couple of phone calls, right? Checking with Melissa and then calling the candidates? Or is it more than a couple of phone calls?
Well, we don't have a president.
And we don't, yeah, well, we'll have to talk about, yeah, because normally the vice president steps up to president, so since you and Amy are leaving, we'll just have to talk some more about, I guess, maybe you have some suggestions, Chris.
Yeah, I'm willing to be a resource for advice on that. But again, it feels like it doesn't make sense for me to serve on the committee to nominate an executive for a board that I wouldn't actively be on. But I'm certainly willing to talk to you about some ideas, so.
I can, I can reach out to you, Mary, and we can either talk on the phone or email, whatever is easiest for you, but we can do.
Okay. All right, well, thank you, Melissa and Mary for, it was a great, I was in a class yesterday and the leader of the class used the word "voluntold", so thank you for being voluntold to serve in this. Technically, we should do that as a motion. So Amy, do you mind making that as a motion as Personnel Chair?
I will make a motion that Mary and Melissa are the chairs of the executive nominating committee.
Yep. All right. Is there a second for that? All right, I saw Niraj with the thumbs up, so. All in favor signify by raising your hand. All right, that carries. Thank you all. Anything else from Personnel at this time, Amy?
No, that's it for now.
Okay, thank you. Strategic planning, Rachel?
We've been mostly focusing on trying to find alternative solutions for the barriers in the library to try and get the shower curtains down. Melissa had done a really nice job of, well, and Niraj, they had both collected some photos from area libraries and Melissa was kind enough to go back to our library to get rough estimates, measurements of the areas that would need to be enclosed. We met with Tony LaFontaine a few weeks ago to discuss his position on that, as well as, we also talked about exterior signage. And we have a follow-up meeting with him tomorrow to just touch base with him, see what the town has planned, because he agreed that the shower curtains had initially been put up as a short-term solution, not realizing that, who would have foreseen that this, many months later, we would still be in this situation? So we're working on getting more permanent and aesthetically pleasing barriers up. And Niraj and Melissa had just sent photos from the Webster Library and they had their town build the framing for large sheets of plexiglass. So we may be able to talk with Tony to see if town employees can help us in that respect to help keep costs down and also that may speed things up.
One thing that I found in doing my research the past couple of days, I spoke to someone from the Penfield Schools to see who they use and what material they're using. And I was told that the New York State is requiring schools to use a polycarbonate material because of its heat resistance in a fire. So I don't know if that's something that the library would want to adhere to as well if they fall under the same requirements, but someone mentioned that, one of the companies I spoke with mentioned that, you know, there's different materials you can use and how the New York State schools are required to use the polycarbonate. So I don't know if you know that answer, Bunny, or if not, we can ask Tony tomorrow, but it's just something to think about.
Let's wait and hear Tony chime in on that.
Okay, and then anyone have anything else to say about that? No, okay. We had also discussed with Tony some of the exterior changes, realizing that these are lower priority. But he had said that he was going to try to have the exterior staff door painted just to kind of blend it in. Melissa had pointed out that it stands out quite a bit. Has that been painted, Bunny?
No.
Okay, so we'll follow up with that because Tony was trying to get that done in the fall while the weather was still decent. And then we were also waiting to get some design options for exterior signage. But overall, that meeting went really well and we're excited to meet with him again tomorrow.
Thank you, Rachel. Any questions for Rachel on the progress of the strategic planning team?
If you wanted to mention the freestanding sign.
What do you want? Just that, that's what I meant when I was saying that we were waiting for exterior.
Oh, right, 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 yeah.
Design options, because the town has their own companies that they would deal with. Is that what you meant?
Yeah.
Okay, that was it for strategic planning.
All right, thank you. Bylaws and policies. Mary, we have a couple of things from you on the agenda.
Two were attached, the fines and fees waiver and staff and volunteer borrowing policy. So if you could look those over and we're gonna vote to reapprove them next month. They don't need any changes. And then Bunny, I think internet safety is yours.
Yes, as a result of the Universal Service Administrative Company that administers E-Rate, we had an audit. And one of the outcomes of the audit was we, Monroe County Library System came out pretty well, but the company discovered that a lot of people had slightly outdated internet safety policies. Ours was okay, but they have since established some new baselines. So it was felt that every library probably should rework its internet safety policy. I did that, I've submitted that to you to look over. Before we could even consider passing that policy, we are required by the Universal Service Administrative Company to conduct a public hearing. That public hearing must be completely disengaged from the library board meeting. So as opposed to a town board meeting where sometimes a public hearing is a part of that, it cannot be part of our regular board meeting. So I've consulted with David Renner about how we could conduct, under the current circumstances, possibly via Zoom, a public hearing. And he has advised me that the best time for us to schedule a separate public hearing would be at 6:00 PM on a Wednesday evening because then that will come in before and presumably finish up. I don't think it'll be a long hearing. It'll finish up before he has to gear up to do some of his other obligations on Wednesday night. Or Mondays are pretty wide open for him to conduct a public hearing for us, very similar to the way he's set us up to conduct our open library board meeting. So I was wondering if tonight we could decide on a Wednesday to do that hearing or a Monday. I need 10 to 20 days' lead time to get the word out for people by law. And I have to have that into the vehicle that will be our main way of communicating that to the public by noon on the Thursday of every week. So if you can make all those mathematical things come to one point and maybe figure out what date would be the best for us to have the public hearing for that.
All right, so if you need 10 to 20 days, that puts us past October because it's October 20th now.
Yes.
And the first Monday and Wednesday in November are the day before and the day after the election. And something tells me nobody's gonna be paying attention to a public hearing, which may be an advantage. Maybe we want a public hearing that nobody would pay attention to.
Excuse me, Chris, I just wanted to add, there's no great rush about this. They would, Monroe County Library System would like us to have our internet safety policy approved by the end of the year. But there's no great hurry to have it done, say by the next board meeting or anything, if we need to build a little more time in for the hearing.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I was just saying, like, clearly, we're gonna wait until after the election. So I pulled up a calendar while you were talking and I guess for me, I try to keep things out of December because extra stuff often is happening for people then. So if we look at Monday and Wednesday in November, I see like the 9th, 11th, 16th and 18th. Those are, so that's not the election week and not Thanksgiving week, so probably the most likely that we'd be able to get people. Is there a preference for any of those dates? Or any of those dates don't work for people?
I think the 11th is a holiday.
Oh, that's right, that's Veterans Day, thank you. Yeah. So 9th, 16th or 18th, any other preferences or preferences not against?
So do we need to attend?
I would say we would at least need several of us to attend. We would need a quorum to attend, but I don't think we need to commit to all of us. Is that correct, Bunny?
I think that's correct.
I can't do, I can't do Wednesday at like 6:00 or something. If it's gonna be at 6:00, then I can't do Wednesday at 6:00, but I can do Mondays.
So Mondays work better?
Any, I can do any of those days.
I can too.
If we're looking at a Monday, I can do the 9th. I have Girl Scouts on the 16th, but I could do the 9th.
All right, so Bunny, should we propose the 9th to David Renner? And if that doesn't work for him, have the 16th as a fallback date? Does that make sense?
That works for me.
Okay. All right.
And shall we, shall we say 6 o'clock? He said anytime on Mondays actually works fine for him. It was just the time limitation on Wednesday. So did you have a time, maybe? Did you want to try to do it 7:00 like we do this meeting or 6:00? Is he was proposing for the alternative?
I'm fine with the 6:00. Is that?
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a question? This is not about that. I had a question about the staff and volunteer borrowing policy and procedure.
Yeah.
I was, I guess I didn't know about it. And when I read it, I was really surprised. And I would have thought that we should pay our own fines, get our materials back on time and kind of be examples to people instead of expecting preferential treatment. I was just, I was just really like, whoa, where did this come from? Is that, am I the only one who feels like that? I mean, I feel like that's sort of taking advantage of a position that we've been given and doing something that, you know, isn't quite right. We shouldn't have more, I don't think we should have more privileges than the general public. That's what, that's my position. If everybody else feels differently, that's fine, but I'm just making that general comment about that.
No, thanks for sharing that. It's better to get that out now before we vote on it next month. This is sort of an existing policy that we're looking to reapprove and carry over. Mary or Bunny or other of you willing to or able to respond to that about why this policy was put together the way it currently stands? And what's the thought process behind that?
Well, when I came here, that was a longstanding policy. It's a kind of mixed out in the other libraries and the Monroe County Library System. Some have a policy similar to ours. Some agree with Barbara, do not extend any preferential treatment to volunteers.
Well, I'm just asking the question. It's good to know that this has been a long stand. You know, this is the first time we voted on it since I've been on the board. So it was, I just saw it and I thought, whoa, how different.
So I think it's a good idea to waive the fees because we do spend a lot of time for the board and everything, our time commitment. I just think it would, it's just a nice courtesy. That's my opinion.
Well, I wouldn't take advantage of it. I think I ought to pay my own fines. And I don't think I would, I should abuse the privilege of borrowing things from the library. But everybody has his or own view on that. And, you know, if that's policy, we can vote on the policy. But I just think that it's, as I said, I was just kind of surprised.
No, thank you for sharing that. And just to clarify, we'll be voting on the policy next month. Generally, we present the policy one month to vote on it the following month. I guess the way I look at it, I'm with you, Barbara, that I've paid fines that staff members have offered to forgive for me, but I feel that I have a responsibility and to set a good example. But I guess the big thing that I look at that reading it is the issue of like the collection agency, which is sort of a, we don't want to be sicking a collection agency on the people who work for us. And that's sort of what I take away from that of like, okay, we'd rather have the people pay their fines, but if it becomes an issue, we'd rather forgive it than be doing some sort of punitive thing to somebody who works for us. And I guess that's my reading on it.
Well, there are limitations to the amount of forgiveness that we can send to people. And I'm with you, Barbara. I've always paid my fines. I've always had that privilege as an employee of the library, but I've never taken advantage of it. Well, maybe we could.
Well, maybe we could take volunteers out and leave it in for the staff. I mean, I, you know, I'm not, I'm not, as I said, I was mostly surprised and I don't think I would do it. But if that's, if people want that as a policy, that's, that's okay. But maybe to to think of the staff if they if they but I would like to think that they would return materials too. So anyhow, thank you for listening.
Thank you for asking a question. Yeah. Anything else on any of the three policies that have been presented by Mary or Bunny? So they're presented tonight to vote on next month. So if you come up with a question after the meeting, you you can send something out so that we can vote next month. So, all right. Anything else, Mary?
That's it.
All right, thank you. And so, sorry, I'm scrolling from the policies back up to the agenda. You'd think I'd have the order memorized by now, but I don't. So it's Communications is up next. Naraj, anything to report?
No, but I think we need to communicate for that search committee, right? So like something should happen. In the past, I worked with Mrs. O'Neill. And she she put something together. But is there anything else that we should be doing?
Yeah, Gail, there's often something that you have that you send out. Is that correct?
There's advertisements on all our social media right now. It's on our webpage, homepage. There is a slide on the digital sign at the circulation desk and at the kiosk when you walk in. And we also have posters posted in the library. And the application is available, a hard copy at the information desk. And also, there's a link on our website so people can, excuse me, submit their applications online and email them to pennfieldtrustees@gmail.com. It's pretty much all the same way of applying as it was the previous time.
Thank you, Gail. One thing I remember from previous years is that you sent a copy of sort of the ad to us as trustees that we could then also send it out either to neighborhood mailing lists or to people that we know who have expressed interest. Do you be able to do that again this year?
Yes, it was my plan to do that after tonight's meeting. I showed Amy what Miriam Arnold created last week, and we went ahead and posted it because time was of the essence. And then after tonight, I was going to email everyone copies of all the things that she created to show you all what's happening.
Yep, good, yeah. And that timing made sense because the 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 search team technically didn't exist until this meeting. So to send it out to us after the meeting is is appropriate.
Yeah, thank you. I hoped that was right.
Yeah.
I hope so too, because it really was kind of like a time crunch.
Yeah.
And I didn't want to wait to get the ball rolling until after the after this meeting. So Gail and I kind of decided together to do that. And Miriam was amazingly quick about getting things put together and available to be put out. So thanks.
She's very talented. Yeah. She's.
It's one of those things that you want everything ready. So when the meeting is finished, you can just kind of hit the go button, right?
Right, that's what I plan to do tomorrow morning.
Great, thank you. All right, thanks for asking, Naraj. Anything else from Communications? No, okay. All right, and then I guess Foundation Committee, Mary, we're back to you.
We're working on publicizing the Amazon Smile. We're working on a flyer to hand out. And we have another new member. So now there's four members plus me as the liaison. Her name is Ciara Howber, C.I.A.R.A. And she grew up on Penn Field Center Road and she's a multi-generational Penn Field resident. Moved to Cleveland for school and just moved back with her small child and her husband, who's also a Penn Field resident. So she seems very enthusiastic. So we're still looking for more people. We'd like to get up to seven. I don't think I'm in that count, so that's three more. But it's hard to recruit right now.
Yeah. Yeah, it is.
And that's all I have this one.
All right, thank you. Director's report, Bunny?
Are there any questions or comments on the Director's Report? I mention as one of the items in the Director's Report that I have submitted a memorandum of agreement that was drafted by the foundation to Mr. Horowitz, Richard Horowitz, who is the town attorney, to look over. And he actually encountered a little bit of a snag with it. He was a little concerned that the foundation is interwoven way too closely to pass scrutiny by the State Comptroller's Office. So he has asked that Kathy Weber, the President of the Foundation Board, and I, and he, and Barbara Churto, the Town Comptroller, meet and discuss recommended changes to that to see if we can establish enough distance to satisfy the law about having having to have those extricated from the two bodies extricated from one another.
He is not a fan of foundations. He will do what he can to not have it.
Well.
So.
Yeah. It's good to know where that perspective is coming from. We'll also do our best to make sure that we have safeguards in place so that the the foundation is its own entity. Because we do want to abide by the law. But but it is going to exist. That's been, that's established. So but thank, thank you for that input, Barbara. Bunny, could you talk to, you kind of mentioned it a little bit earlier when we were going through the finance reports, and there's some comments in your report. But could you follow up a little bit on the anticipated budget cuts for 2021, both state and local, and how that might impact us?
Well, locally, we were asked to remove $36,000 from our our budget I submitted to the town. The governor has said all along, he, we are experiencing about a 20% revenue shortfall in the state. When we experience a 20% revenue shortfall in the state, that trickles down. So money that's distributed to us in the form of the various kinds of state aid also gets cut by 20%. I know the governor is waiting until after the the national election to see what possible negotiation can be done to restore some of the aid to the states before he makes a final decision. But the New York State Library has already issued the amounts that we're going to be losing for next year in the form of state aid that we get, the local library services aid. And that has been cut by about 20%. We're down 2,000 over what we were sort of hoping we would get, which isn't even close to the statutory amount we're entitled to. But it is is the customary amount that the legis, state legislature has been voting for us. And we expected to remain at the most optimistic flat. It is turning out we're taking our 20% hit on that. Does that explain what you were looking for?
Yeah, yeah. So that, yeah, that that definitely explains or answers the question that I'd raised. I'm curious as to, for us, like, in in terms of impact, are we going to be able to keep current staff? How are we going to be able to manage that kind of a loss to our our operating budget?
Oh, I already, I I had already submitted a very flat budget. So I was thinking we might not be revisited to ask to contribute any more back, but we were. I didn't have an awful lot of fat to cut out of it to make up that $36,000. But what little, I thought we could squeeze and then work with a Titan Belt budget for next year. I pulled out, but I had no, no alternative but to take most of it out of materials. I distributed among all the different categories of materials budgets. Direct books being the biggest portion of that took the biggest hit on that, which is why I'm trying to spend money and cumber money, whatever I can do to push some of our 2020 money into cover some of the cuts that we have in 2021 to mitigate that impact a little bit.
All right, thank you. Any other questions on the Director's Report? Either that aspect of it or something else that was raised in the report?
I would just like to add something else about that. The other town department heads regularly send a monthly report to Tony, and the library has never been obligated to do that because, of course, we're sort of self-contained with our board being in charge of of the library. But I sent it along last month to see if maybe Tony would enjoy seeing it. And his secretary suggested that I not only send it to him. Yes, they were delighted to see that, to know what's going on in the library, and asked that I also send a copy every month to all the town board members. So as soon as we finish this meeting, it's only polite to have you see it first. It's your report after all. But when this meeting is over, Gail, with some of the other documents, she sends over to Barbara Churto and sends over to the town for various reasons. She'll be forwarding my Director's Report to the supervisor and the members of the town board.
One other question that I had, when I was looking at the minutes from last month, we talked about how we were resuming receiving donations for the Friends at the back door. Curious as to how that's been going so far?
Well, it's it's up to the Friends to staff that. I wish it were staffed a little bit more to make it more accessible to patrons. I haven't heard any negative feedback about it. So I think it's it's kind of a learning curve for people to know that they have, there are certain hours, just like the libraries only open certain hours. The donation opportunity is only available certain hours. But it is five days a week from 10:00 to 1:00. So they have have five opportunities of a range of time to make their donations.
I I made use of it. I I stopped by a couple of weeks ago and dropped off a couple of bucks. And it went pretty smoothly for me as a as a donor. But just wanted to check to see how are those going? If you'd gotten feedback from the Friends or from other patrons?
I haven't heard anything too negative yet, but maybe it's a little too early in the whole process to have, for them to have been able to do very much evaluation of it. But and remember that we are, at the same time, we're participating in sustainable shelves that I I wrote about in last month's Director's Report. We've already gotten one money from one shipment back from that or the promise of money from one shipment of that. We've sent our second shipment. We probably have before we've cleaned out everything. We've been able to weed out of the collection and discarded at least two more shipments. Excuse me. And then we'll see after that, but they'll be ongoing. As soon as we are able to assemble every month, the minimum 500 items that can go in a shipment, we'll ship those off and see what money we can make from Baker &amp; Taylor.
Thank you. All right, anything else on the Director's Report? All right, so I don't think we have action items, decisions, deadlines coming out tonight. Although I guess the the one is for the trustee search team to to get rolling, the three of you to to talk to each other, to loop Linda in and to get that going. And then for the office nominating team, for Mary and Melissa to get started. And either I'll reach out to you or you reach out to me for just to check on that for the changeover that will be coming at the end of the year. Any other decisions or deadlines? I think those are the ones. There were a couple of unfinished business items that were brought to my attention between last meeting and this one. This is, these are things that had come up earlier in the year, like months and months ago, that we had tabled. And somebody suggested, hey, what happened to those? We hadn't had those come back. And so we wanted to bring those up again. And one, this is another, I think, the self-checkout machine. And we had talked about that previously. At the time, we had decided not to do it because it didn't fit with our library slogan and our branding of the how may I help you and the the high emphasis on patron service. But with the changes of COVID and and a lot of things going to to non-touch as much as we can, we're asked to to reexamine that. And so, again, I'm, you know, that's right. I intentionally had Gail put it on the agenda so people would see that. I don't know if we're ready to have a discussion about that or if we want to sort of percolate on it and talk about it next month.
I can provide a little bit more background on it in the environment of COVID. It has turned out they're they're not that reliable anyway, so they do require a lot of of staff interaction to make them work for patrons. I've never, I I'm a pretty knowledgeable library user. I've never been able to get one to work satisfactorily. They are discovering the places that have them, that they are one more point that the staff has to constantly monitor and keep clean. So after every use, they have a staff member stationed right at the self-checkout that cleans it after after every use. So maybe non-touch for the staff as far as handling the materials for the patrons. But there is staff. It requires some investment of staff to keep those those going properly.
And and having used them at other libraries, there are touch screens. So you're touching and and same with, you know, debit cards, right? You end up.
Actually, I used one when I lived in Evanston, and I lived there and used it for seven years. And you took your library card and it read the card, and you put your materials on a big tray. And they're in, it read everything, printed out a receipt that you tore off. You picked up your books and you went away. It it worked every time. It was better than holding a whole bunch of books and standing in line while the clerk at the desk has a personal conversation. And that has happened to me. And I I would much rather be able to go. I know it's nice to think that, oh, our service is really important, but sometimes the service isn't so good. So I'd rather have a working machine than somebody who makes me stand there and hold materials.
I'm not sure what integrated library system Evanston used or what method they use to detect the items. They might have been using some RFID, which we we don't use. We still use barcodes. RFID does make it more efficient to use, but we're not using that technology. It's expensive technology to convert to. It would probably take $100,000 to convert the library to RFID. So those may be more reliable than the barcode ones. But the the, I haven't found the, any of the brands Biblioteca or Envisionware, any of the brands in any of the libraries I've worked in and used to be reliable enough to satisfy me.
Funny, when you say the library doesn't have the technology, you're just talking about Penn Field?
Yes.
You know, okay, because like Fairport and Arundicoyt have the same system Barbara's talking about, where you can just put your books in a stack and it somehow scans all of them at once?
Yeah, Fairport has RFID. I didn't know if Arundicoyt did, but it would make sense that they would have, just having built a new library, that's very often what people use. They incorporate the the high expense of attaching the RFID tags as a part of their their upgrade if they're building a new library or doing an expansion. So I'm not surprised that Arundicoyt is using RFID.
So you need a whole new technology or new expense other than just a self-checkout machine, right?
To to do the method that Melissa and Barbara is talking about, if you're able to put a whole stack of books and have them all done at once? Yes.
Okay, I never understood that.
Yeah, thanks for explaining that to us, Bunny. And then and then the other unfinished business, and this may have been impacted by some staff changes that have happened in the past year as well. But there've been earlier in the year, some things on on the agenda about updating the Penn Field Public Library, the website, our our front page website. Just kind of curious as to where that where that is or what's happening with that.
Yes, I have information about that. Had off the press. I just talked today to David Renner about that. And he's the guru for the town that is going to be hosting our portion of the town website. And he said that things got, we ran into last fall some hitches with the company we were working with that necessitated his going back to the drawing board for a few of the departments. The library was pretty unscathed on that. We have Miriam Arnold, so she was definitely the point person on making sure we were right on track with our upgrade. Then COVID hit. And when we were coming out of lockdown from COVID, David had had a lot of items on his plate. The website wasn't the highest prioritized item on his plate. But he has been getting back to it now. And he said that in, at the end of October, early November, they expect to launch a beta site, which will give us a chance. It won't be available to the public, but it'll be live for town employees to troubleshoot, to be sure we're working out all the bugs. And he is optimistic that by December, we will be able to launch, do a very soft launch available to the public that will reveal some more Achilles' heels with the new website. And he's hoping, and he thought December was a good time because everybody is so busy with everything else. And we don't have, we're not, none of the town departments is terribly ambitious about presenting a lot of programs or anything because we're all busy with the holidays and people are busy with the holidays, so they don't attend. So he thought that was a great time for us to detect any areas that we needed to troubleshoot so that by the time January rolled around, we would have a, we'd be able to go whole hog into our new website. So that's the latest from David Renner on that.
Thank you. So that was sort of the unfinished business or items that have been on previous agendas that we want to follow up on. Anything for new business tonight that I'm not aware of? All right. Then we will do the claims payment authorization. And Melissa, I think you were the, were you the auditor this month?
Yep. I moved that we approved the vouchers and the payment of $42,740.12.
Thank you. Would somebody like to second that? I saw Barbara's hand. Sorry. Well, I saw three different hands, but I saw Barbara's hand first. All right. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. All right. Any opposed? Same sign. All right. That carries. So we appoint an auditor for next month. It would normally be Flute, but I'm exempt as president or chair. And so that goes to Griffin Adams, I think is next. So Megan, are you available to be the auditor next month?
Yep. Yep, absolutely.
Okay, so that is you. Before we adjourn for tonight, does it come up in the chat? There is supposed to be an executive meeting after tonight's meeting. I don't know that we've sent an invite around. Rachel and Megan, you're the.
I was just going to say, I apologize, Chris, because I think you had emailed me about that and I had not. So I will, in the email, I will get a, I just set up a Zoom meeting. So I'll get that link sent out to the board members.
All right. So that'll come out, and we will start that in about three minutes. We'll say eight o'clock. Before we do, we have to officially adjourn this meeting. So if somebody would be so kind as to move to adjourn. All right. Megan has moved. Anybody like to second? All right. Thank you, Amy. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Those are a bunch of hands. All right. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you, Bunny and Gail. And we will see you next month.
See you next month.